It is now seven o'clock. The city council meeting will come to order. Clerk, are all councilors present?
All councilors are present.
Okay, the second order will be the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next in order will be our presentations. Vice President Levy and Clerk.
The first proclamation declaring May 15 through the 21st as Emergency Medical Services Week.
We're going to ask Chief Liggett to join. City of Beloit, Wisconsin official proclamation. Whereas emergency medical services is a vital public service, and whereas the members of emergency medical services teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas access to quality emergencies care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas emergency medical services has grown to fill a gap by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventive medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine, and whereas the emergency medical services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers. And whereas the members of the emergency medical services teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills, and whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value in the accomplishments of emergency medical services providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now therefore, the council president of the Beloit City Council does hereby proclaim the week of May 15 through May 21, 2016, as Emergency Medical Services Week with the theme EMS Strong: Call to Care. The city council further encourages the community to observe this week in appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities presented this second day of May 2016. David F. Lukey, President.
City councilors, Madam City Manager, my fellow citizens, thank you very much for this proclamation. We have celebrated 41 years in the paramedic program in the city of Beloit, and one of the first of its size to have a full paramedic program. Those of us may have remembered through our early adult years, the show emergency that really brought prominence of emergency medical services to the United States and what the paramedic level program can do. Today, we carry external pacemakers, advanced monitoring devices, 12 lead EKGs. We carry 35 different medications. What paramedics were doing back in the 70s, our EMTs are doing now. So the advance in medical care continues to keep pace with our lifestyles, with our medical conditions, with advances in medical technology and medications, and Beloit, I am proud to say, is on the cutting edge of that all the time. We are blessed with exceptional medical direction through Mercy Hospital, and with a countywide medical direction that involves MD-1. It's a physician response vehicle that can come and assist our paramedics in very critical patients. They also come and help us when we have a significant fire or emergency, and they directly monitor our responders to make sure they stay healthy on the fire scene or emergency scene. We also have a great partnership with Beloit Hospital. They provide us with our educational venue to hold all of our continuing education, and they receive 98 percent of the patients that we transport. They're a fantastic medical facility, and their medical staff there has always been very helpful in developing our skilled responders. So to the city council and to my fellow citizens, thank you for your support, and thank you for the opportunity to serve.
Our next proclamation is for National Police Week.
To brand-new chief, Chief Z. City of Beloit, Wisconsin official proclamation. Whereas police services provided in our city are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, and whereas the men and women who protect us, defend us, and serve as guardians on a daily basis are highly trained and dedicated, and whereas the city of Beloit's police department incorporates modern-day community policing practices, focuses on their role as guardians, and proactively engaging our community to create, build, and sustain trust and legitimacy. Whereas the city of Beloit Police Department implements said community policing strategy through a neighborhood-based, problem-oriented, and data-driven approach in reducing crime, fear, and disorder. And whereas police officers recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by working in partnership to enhance public safety. And whereas the support and trust of an involved cooperative and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of police services and programs which are all guided by the police department's community policing philosophy, and could we not put more Ps in it? And whereas the health, safety, and quality of life in this community greatly depends on these programs, services, and employees providing them, and whereas we recognize the sacrifices of present and past employees. Now therefore, the city council president of the Beloit City Council does hereby proclaim the week of May 15 through May 21, 2016, as National Police Week in the city of Beloit, and calls upon all citizens and civic organizations to appreciate the contributions which these offices make every day to our health, safety, and quality of life presented this second day of May 2016. David F. Lukey, City Council President.
Thank you, councilors and community members. I'd like to remind you that that week is an opportunity to really pay tribute to our law enforcement officers who day in and day out, shift to shift, take reasonable risks, and significant sacrifice over the course of their career to serve our community, and they do that willingly because that's what they want to do, and it's a special type of person that is willing to do that over the long term of a career, and I think our community is obviously better for it. Law enforcement has been asked to do a lot more over the last five to 10 years than they have traditionally done. Just as the fire department has evolved, so has law enforcement, and the expectations of law enforcement are greater. We have really strived to build trust and legitimacy with our community, to be more transparent, especially in use of force incidents, and really to try and better educate the public. So, you know, these are things that add already to an already difficult job. I'm very proud of the men and women of our department. I think they serve the community well, and they will continue to do so as we kind of evolve and grow and really move to the tip of the spear in law enforcement in Wisconsin. So I'm looking forward to the future with the department. You know, the community, it's a great week to reach out and say hi to your local officer, get to know him if you haven't met him already. And on Thursday, May 12th, we have an award ceremony at the Rotary Club at 6:00 PM. We have about 25, 30 officers that will be receiving awards of various dimensions, so we're encouraging the public and media, our elected officials, et cetera, to be present for that very special event. And on Thursday, May 19th, is the Rock County Law Enforcement Memorial, and that's going to be in Janesville. And that will be all of the Rock County law enforcement entities coming together to pay tribute. So thank you for this proclamation, and I appreciate the opportunity to serve as well.
Chief, do you know what time is on the 12th and the 19th?
On the 12th, it's 6:00 PM, and on the 19th, I think it's also 6:00, but I will, I'll shoot you an email, and I'll double-check that.
May 12th, there's a Rotary Center at 6:00 o'clock.
Correct.
Okay, and then Janesville on the 19th, you'll get back to it.
I will send you the 19th, the invite for the 19th with the exact location and time.
Thank you, Chiefs. Our third proclamation is for National Travel and Tourism Week.
Good evening again. Hello. City of Beloit, Wisconsin official proclamation. Whereas travel has a positive effect on the state of Wisconsin, Rock County, the city of Beloit, and the nation's economic prosperity and image abroad, it also impacts business productivity and to individual travelers' well-being. Whereas travel to and within the United States provides significant economic benefits for the nation, generating more than 2.1 trillion in economic output in 2014, with 927.9 billion spent directly by travelers. Whereas travelers among the largest private sector employers in the United States, supporting 15 million jobs in 2014, including 8 million directly in the travel industry and 7 million in other industries. Whereas travelers' spending directly generated tax revenues of 141.5 billion for federal, state, and local governments' funds used to support essential services and programs. Whereas in Rock County, travelers directly spent 220.6 million, generated 363.9 million in total business sales, provided a need for 3,875 travel-related jobs with a combined labor income of $89.8 million, and expended 26.8 million in local and state tax revenues in 2015. Whereas international travel to the United States is the nation's number-one services export. In 2015, travel generated $226.6 billion in exports, creating a $74 billion trade surplus for the United States. Whereas meetings, events, and incentive travel are core business functions that help companies strengthen business performance, educate employees and customers, and reward business accomplishments, which in turn boosts the U.S. economy. In 2014, domestic and international business travelers spent $283 billion. Whereas leisure travel, which accounts for more than three-quarters of all trips taken in the United States, spurs countless benefits, excuse me, to travelers' health and wellness, creativity, cultural awareness, education, happiness, productivity, and relationships. Whereas travel is a pillar of economic growth, creating jobs at a faster rate than other sectors. Now therefore, the city council president of the Beloit City Council does hereby proclaim May 1 through the 7th, 2016, as National Travel and Tourism Week in the city of Beloit, and urges the citizens of Beloit to join me in this special observance celebrating the work of Visit Beloit and the travel industry in our community presented this second day of May 2016. David F. Lukey, President, Beloit City Council.
Good evening, councilors, city manager, and citizens here. You know, my name's Celestino Rafini, Executive Director of Visit Beloit, and very proud to celebrate National Travel and Tourism Week. Nationally, this is our 33rd anniversary of celebrating really a week where we traditionally release a lot of the data from 2014. And most importantly, one number I feel urged to call out in this was the 363.9 million in business spending by travelers to Rock County in 2015. We'll be very excited to announce this, sort of a pre-announcement, that within the state of Wisconsin, that was the third-largest percentage increase of any county in the state of Wisconsin from 2014 to 2015, of nearly 7 percent increase. Only Fond du Lac and Columbia Counties were ahead of us. So very glad to see very significant growth here in Rock County regarding the travel industry. And one other note in the proclamation, we talk a lot about the medians industry, and a lot of people don't realize that really primarily due to corporate travel, within our community tonight, for example, there's probably 350 people that are not from Beloit in our community tonight looking for things to do, dining at our restaurants, and staying at our hotels. And in particular, this time of the week here, beginning a new week, corporate travel really is a strong core component of the travel industry in Beloit, and one thing we're very proud to work with, the companies here in Beloit, and increasing. Locally, National Travel and Tourism Week is a way to give back to the community. Our job is really to bring visitors here who don't elect you and don't live here, to spend their money and to boost our tax revenues, and they go home. So our job is to continue to bring those people here, not only to Beloit, to the state line region as well, to the county. And we take a quick moment this week to give thanks back to our community. So yesterday, to kick off the week, we were giving tickets away to the Snappers' double header to residents from the state line area. On Saturday, we're working at the Parks and Rec Department to provide free kayaks, paddle boats, fishing poles, and bicycles at the lagoon. All residents have to do are show their IDs, show they're from Beloit or South Beloit, and they can use that for free on our behalf. And we're really excited. Most of you know we have a mobile welcome center. We affectionately call the Cruiser. It's our third year for having the Cruiser, and myself and our Director of Sales and Servicing, Matt Boson, he and I are taking the Cruiser on its real first official road trip. So this weekend, actually two weekends in May, we are going on a away game series with Snappers. So we'll be promoting Beloit and the region in South Bend, Indiana, Friday and Saturday, and then two weeks from now, we'll be in Peoria, Illinois with Cruiser, and we're doing activation events there in those communities, promoting this wonderful community. So I appreciate the proclamation and all that you do to support the travel industry, and look forward to another wonderful year. Thank you.
Celestino, I just wanted to ask you, you say 350 people a day are strangers to Beloit. Are they business people or travelers or?
Sure, yeah. And I use that 350 loosely just based on what we know hotel occupancy rates to be on an evening like this, a Monday in May. On a Monday, yeah, primarily, most of those are corporate travelers. A lot of those are coming in on a Sunday and staying through Thursday, working throughout the week, either as a customer or a vendor of businesses in Beloit. But then we flip, you know, come this past weekend, we hosted Team World statewide horseshoe pitching championship at Telford Park. The Wisconsin Fast Pitch Softball Championship was off Prairie Avenue at the complex, the Y complex there. So weekends, we switch back to a leisure, more of a leisure-focused traveler, but yeah, definitely corporate's a strong base, core of consumers during the week.
If you go down Milwaukee Road on a Friday or Saturday night, those hotels all look filled.
Yeah, yeah, we are working to keep it that way.
Good, good, keep it up. Thank you.
Thanks.
Public hearings, there are no public hearings. Citizen participation, at this time, any citizens in the audience that would like to come up and speak may do that. I don't think we have any slips of people who...
There are some up there, I don't know, nobody turned any in.
Nobody turned any in. But at this point, if anybody would like to speak, please come up, give your name, and please limit your comments to three minutes, and we'd like to ask you not to make any disparaging remarks. Are there any citizens that would like to speak? Second call for citizen input. Third and final call. Okay, we'll close that. Next, the consent agenda. All items listed on the consent agenda are considered routine and enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the general order of business and considered at this point on the agenda. Counselors wish anything removed. Okay, is there a motion to approve?
I'll move.
Second?
Second.
Approved by Preschel, seconded by Duncan. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Ordinances? There are no ordinances. Appointments? What we have passed out are the appointments for the council, the new councilors and the old councilors, to the commissions in the city and committees, and those will be posted in the paper probably this week sometime. I could go through those briefly. On the Alcohol and Beverage License Control Committee, Counselor Duncan. The Appointment Review Committee, Councilors Levy and Lukey. The Business Improvement District, Counselor DeForest. The Community Action of Rock County and Walworth County, Counselor Hendricks. The Community Development Authority, Councilors Preschel and Hendricks. The Convention and Visitors Bureau Board of Directors, Counselor DeForest. The Equal Opportunities Commission, Counselor Duncan. The Landmarks Commission, Counselor Slanicker. The Metropolitan Planning Organization, Counselor Lukey. The Parks, Recreation, and Conservation Advisory Commission, Counselor Slanicker. The Planning Commission, Counselor Levy. And the Traffic Review Committee, Counselor Preschel. Next on the agenda would be councilor's activities and upcoming events.
We need a motion.
Okay, I'm sorry. Is there a motion to accept these appointments?
Some left.
Moved by DeForest?
Second.
Seconded by Duncan. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Hendricks.
Hendricks, seconded, okay. Second one's by Hendricks. Okay, we'll take the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, passed. Next will be councilor activities and upcoming events. We'll start with Counselor DeForest.
Thank you. And, yeah.
All right, just a second, make sure...
Sure.
Thanks for being patient with me tonight. My light went off.
You can hang it, so push the red button.
There, I have, it's just blank.
Good.
I probably turned it off. Does that mean I'm fired?
So you'll then just push this one right here, and now she's up.
Okay, now how did you get that? You got that?
Somehow, yeah, there's some kind of...
You've got to help me with that, Kevin. Okay, Counselor DeForest, sorry, go ahead.
No problem, thank you. Lots of activity happening the last two weeks. I attended Community Action's Trans graduation program. These are individuals who successfully completed the construction/transportation training program and was thrilled to be there with them for that graduation. There will be another round of classes that will be offered this summer, so if you're interested, please contact Community Action to find out more about that. Was also thrilled to participate and listen to the great visionary ideas presented for the Fourth Street Corridor as part of our city center design, and had a really fun time at the Earth Day festivities at Big Hill's Well-Tee Environmental Center. I actually have a Beanie Baby that some of the kids sent me home with a bean and a cotton ball with water, and I promised them I would try my best to not kill it, and I do have a bean sprout that I will be planting, so thank you to the kids who helped me plant a Beanie Baby. That was very fun. I was thrilled to be able to attend the police chief's swearing-in and welcome formally officially to Chief Sobolski. I also was excited about a tour of the Turtle Creek Bath House. This was the bath house that used to exist for the pool that was there, and both the Landmarks Commission and the Parks and Rec Commission are looking seriously about how to preserve that very important landmark for the city of Beloit and its residents. I attended the Crime Stoppers Meeting that was held at La Casa Grande, and appreciate all of the efforts that are done by the staff and volunteers and the Crime Stoppers Board for trying to make our city a safer place and to improve communication between community and the police department. Attended the Stand Against Racism event downtown in the city of Beloit that was sponsored by the YWCA, and appreciate their efforts to make sure that we understand our important part in eliminating racism. Attended the Cinco de Mayo event this past weekend, and that was a great turnout, and of course enjoyed the Even Start dancers, and also the Lulac members were pinned at that event, and attended the Knights Academy and did a presentation for the young men in that program. And finally, I would like to extend my thanks to Brett Abear for his service to the Department of Public Works. He's leaving for another position, and he has done a lot in the department to really promote some good work there, so I wanted to thank him. Thank you.
Did you have time to see your family this week?
I have a 17-year-old, he doesn't want to see me.
Thank you, Sheila. Counselor Duncan, I'm sorry, Counselor Slanicker. What we usually do is go from end to end. We'll get you next. Counselor Slanicker.
I have the opportunity.
Just a second.
There you go.
Okay.
Okay, I had the opportunity to come to the swearing of the police chief and congratulate him. Went to the Crime Stoppers event, very good presentation, new technology coming soon, which will be helpful, and also tips in Spanish. I think that'll be great for the future too. Retirement for Judge Henderson, and I attended Arbor Day, and I was able to actually write a poem and speak in front of the kids, so that was a kind of a neat opportunity, and that's all the events that I had.
Thank you, ma'am. Actually, I'm getting this, I'm going to turn it on first, Regina. Okay, got to be patient because we have the wrong names in here, so that would be... Oh, no, we've got it right. Okay, Counselor Duncan.
Okay. First, I want to begin by saying that I'm honored to be a new city councilor and looking forward to serve the citizens of Beloit. This past week, I've been learning a lot about our city government and had the opportunity to be part of the new councilor orientation, which took place at City Hall on Friday, April 22nd. We were given presentations by all department heads, so special thanks to all our city staff that participated. Also, I attended a meeting at the Beloit Public Library, which started at 7:00 and ran to 8:30 on April 20th. On behalf of Beloit 2020, the public was presented with information in regard to reimagining Beloit's Fourth Street Corridor. It was great to hear input from the citizens of Beloit, and I'm anticipating this potential revitalization effort. In addition to that, I had the chance to join in the Second Annual Community Conversation at the Beloit Rotary River Center on April 29th. I just want to say that Michelle Hendricks-Nora and the school district of Beloit did a terrific job in bringing people together to be involved in this effort. I was truly touched by the story from one of the former students that works at McDonald's and his mother, who also shared how the city of Beloit transit system has been beneficial for them. It is important that people with extraordinary gifts are given a chance for employment in our community. Also, I attended the Arbor Day celebration at Frozen School with our city manager and councilor Slanicker, staff, and crew, as well as the retirement celebration for Judge Bill Henderson. I have known Bill for a long time, as a friend, a lawyer, and judge. I also worked with Bill when I served on the school board, so it was an honor to join and recognizing him. I highly commend Bill for his hard work and dedication to the city of Beloit, and wish him much continued success in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Regina.
Thank you. I too am very glad to be up here and start serving as your city councilor. I attended Chief Sobolski's very well-attended swearing-in ceremony. I don't think we've seen too many like that in this forum. My only wish is that everybody could have heard the things he had to say and the things our city manager had to say. I wish more, with that, an even bigger audience for their remarks, because they were quite moving, and I was very impressed. Later on, I was out on my bike, and I got to help to stop the violence group at the New Life Ministries. I've got some pictures of their group, and they're new, they're trying to run up some interest in what they're doing out there this summer, the summer coming. And later on, we were all at the 2020 group at the library. That was interesting, but it's all pie in the sky. There's no city involvement yet, it's just a group, the 2020 group, working to come up with ideas, and, you know, pay attention to that because that's the future. There's two sides to every river, and I think it's time for the west side got its due. And this Saturday, May 7th, is the first farmer's market of the season. Try to make it if you can, enjoy it. I don't know how big it's going to be, but we're supposed to have really good weather. Also, in this week's state line shopping news, the Parks and Rec Department, I'm sorry, Parks and Leisure Services, released their summer activity guide, and that goes over all the plans for the summer, the Dirty Dash, and many other things that they'll be sponsoring, and definitely something to work, to check out. I don't know if the trail maps are going to show our new bike path out in Big Hill Park, but it'd be nice if they did. That's another place to keep your eye on because that's going to get paved and finished off this... off this spring and summer, maybe by June, so keep an eye on that. And other than that, let summer get here, sooner better. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Preschel. Councilor Levy.
Thank you. It's good to be back down here. I want to thank all my supporters and everyone who voted for me, and I want to thank the President Council, because I think, as President Lupke said earlier, that we have a good group down here that really has a desire to move the city forward. So I look forward to working with everyone down here, look forward to working with the new city manager, the new chief. My friend is city attorney, she's not new, but she was the assistant when I was down here before, and it goes to show that we have people that's committed to making Beloit great. So if there's anyone out there looking for something to do and wondering how you can be a part of this, we have several committees that has vacancies that you can come down and apply, you can also apply online. But I also had an opportunity to be the moderator for Youth to Youth. They had a panel discussion on drinking and the effects of drinking and drugs, and they actually had a mom there whose daughter passed away from drinking too much, so it was a very powerful message, and the timing was perfect as we approached graduation season and home and prom. So I think that the message was timely, in a timely manner, and we're hoping that everyone is safe around prom and graduation. If you're underage, please don't drink. I would encourage you that if you know of homes that's having parties, please, adults, if it's underage drinking, don't send your kid or report it, because we know we need to save a life, and I think if we save one life through our efforts of doing that, then we've done a great thing. I was also able to attend the new Councilor's orientation, even though I wasn't new, but you always learn something when you go through it again, so great job to the staff and the city manager for a job well done. That's all that I had.
Thank you, Kevin. Councilor Hendricks.
I'll just say, it's odd being the last person to go when I was the first person to go for the past two years, so you're going to hear a lot of ditto's for the next year. But I also attended the Stand Against Racism event and was able to read the official proclamation on behalf of the city, and that was the YWCA event. I also attended community conversations on last Friday, and that event is to help increase employment of young people with disabilities, as Councilor Duncan said. So it was a well-attended event, and hopefully those conversations come into fruition in this, not just talk. Rhythm of the Night, our annual, the Nightingales' annual Rhythm of the Night event was last Saturday, it was well-attended, a lot of fun. Each year was our eighth, seventh year doing it, a lot of fun, a way for young people to display their talents, and it's a fundraiser for college tours, so that was, that'll clear up some of my time now that that's over. The most important thing I'll say is that May is National Burger Month, and my, well, Nick's burger comes first, this is next week at Hanson's, right? My burger is the last week of May at the Rock Bar and Grill, and it's good, I tasted it, it was great. So you are able to get a discount on the burgers all month. This week is at Doc's for John Wong's Burger, next week at Hanson's, third week at Bushel and Pex, and then the last week of May is at the Rock Bar and Grill, and you can get a discount if you show your library card, so let's support.
Regina, why don't you tell us what your hamburger is?
My burger is sweet and spicy, like me, because they wanted it to be a representative of what I am, but I have, this is important, we need to relax. An all-beef patty with bacon and pineapples and a sweet chili teriyaki sauce with pepper jack cheese on a Hawaiian bun, it's so good. Try it, it's so good.
Everybody's hungry now, no, it's okay. Thank you.
No problem.
Solving, have a... Okay. Well, I thank everybody for their patience with me tonight, and thank you for bringing up the farmer's market, the second-largest one in Wisconsin, getting bigger and better all the time. Right Director, Executive Director? And I want to thank all the Councilors for going to the Fourth Street presentation at the library. Nick, thank you for being the host, and the Y2Y did a nice job moderating, that was very special, especially when their mother talked about the loss of her daughter. And Sheila, you brought up the bath house. I think, I won't tell you how many years ago that I was playground director there with Sarita Harrell, and when that was a playground, and we used, and the pools opened, so we'd play in the playground, and so the kids swam later on. I think the pool's been filled in with cement in the fire department for a while, used that for training, right Chief?
Yes, Chief.
Yeah, but anyway, thanks for bringing, it brings back a lot of memories. Probably the most notable thing that I did this last couple of weeks, I attended an event for teen fathers at the Eclipse Center, and just a very powerful, wonderful program. I was very impressed. I've worked with kids for many years, but this program is working with young men who want to get their lives together, and the tutoring, the working with them is very direct, very hands-on, and teaching them how to be men, real men. And from what I saw, I was, it brings tears to your eyes, just a wonderful program, so I hope we have funding for that program in the future, and good funding. Just want to speak to the citizens of Beloit, just for a second, I have a few comments I wrote down. We've had a very stressful, difficult year with several very critical decisions that have affected all Beloiters during the last year. I want to assure all Beloiters that your seven Councilors up here, our city manager and our department heads and all city employees will continue to work together as a team with you, and with you also as integral members of this team to make Beloit the best it can be. We, as servants of Beloit, with everyone's help and contributions, will improve our housing stock, expand employment opportunities and the economy, will ensure safe and welcoming neighborhoods, and instill greater pride in Beloit. But let me repeat, we are all part of the solution. We need all Beloiters to be part of this. Making Beloit an all-American city is very doable if everybody works together as a team. We're all in this together, we're all equal. Okay. With that, we'll move on to the city managers' presentation.
This is a presentation on creative programming for youth.
All right. I may get fired, Kevin, you rate it.
Am I on? Okay. Good evening, everyone, welcome new Councilors. For those of you who don't know who I am, my name's Terry Downing, and I work in the Community Development Department, and I'm the Director of Community and Housing Services for the city of Beloit. I'm here to introduce our Duffy intern who has a fantastic presentation for you, but first I want to tell you why we had him do this project and give you a little bit of background. So you probably have heard, well, the Councilors know about this, but you, the Councilors that were here, but in the paper, we're talking about this NARSA plan, so Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy Area, which is a plan that we're doing that will allow us to use our CDBG funding in a little more flexible way than we have been able to do. There are three elements to this, there's a neighborhood revitalization element, there is a public safety element that the chief has been working with us on, and then there is a resident empowerment element. As part of the NARSA, we went out and we did some community listening sessions, and we heard from the public, and then we've also done some research, and both the public and the research have said that we, the city needs more youth programming, and in particular, what the residents would like to see and what some of the social workers would like to see is some youth programming, not only in the traditional sense, so the job training and skills enhancement and things like that, but some youth programming in the arts, so kids have another way to express themselves. So with that in mind, I was just, happened to be contacted by Carol Wickersham from Beloit College, who's in the audience tonight, and she brought in Deonte Horton, and when we interviewed him, he just happened to have an interest in the arts, so I thought, what a great project for him to do. So he did this project to see what was out there and what kind of programming there was, and then what we'll do is we've also partnered with Community Action, and Mark Perry's in the audience, too, to assist the city in developing the strategies for the neighborhood, or I'm sorry, the resident empowerment piece of this NARSA, and there will be a strong youth programming element to that. So the research that Deonte has done will be then given to Community Action to hopefully incorporate into the NARSA. So with that, I would like to introduce Deonte Horton.
My name, of course, is Deonte Horton, she just introduced me. I am a, no, Beloit College student, obviously. Just want to say firstly, thank you to Carol Wickersham for giving me the opportunity. So, yeah, with that, okay. So first of all, you know, just to give a general overview of myself, I am, like I said, a Beloit College student, political science major, with a very recent development and interest in dance. It's kind of something I just literally recently did in the past semester, just got done with a performance myself two weeks ago. So with that in mind, I've kind of had an overarching goal of getting youth involved in arts in particular. I've seen it as a good opportunity for students to do something productive and potentially self-invigorating in a, like, very positive way. The Duffy program that I'm a part of, which Carol is over, is basically a program that allows students to get involved with different organizations, different groups in Beloit, the community of Beloit, and just get involved with the different programs that they are particularly interested in. And again, my interest was getting youth involved in arts. So basically, what the three steps in my project were to find out what the target group was, so particularly, like, finding out what age range we were looking at, like, are committing crimes and all these are involved in, I guess we would say, bad behavior, as well as what gender, if there's a racial element or ethnic element applicable to that. So with that, I would then look at creating an inventory of all the programs that were around in Beloit, just to kind of get a sense of, you know, what type of opportunities would be, would present themselves to students if, or students, youth, if they were able to get involved. And then on top of that, I would assess the availability and the ability for students to get involved with them as integral members of the program. So first things first, I just kind of broke down the Beloit Police Department data, specifically looking at arrests over a five-year period from 2010 to 2015. The 2015 numbers are a little misleading, they don't go for the full year, they only go up to July thirty-first of 2015, so just keep an eye out for that. These numbers are specifically, that you'll see in the next couple of slides, are broken down by gender, race and ethnicity, and ages seventeen and under. So, yeah, just keep that in mind when we're looking at these bars. This specifically looks at male, the gender dispersion of arrests over the years, we can see that males outnumber females quite a bit over the years. You can also kind of see this decrease in arrests over time, which is always a positive thing, but again, you can see that males outnumber females when it comes to arrests over this five-year period. This is specifically the ethnic aspect of arrests over time. The Beloit Police Department broke ethnic, broke down ethnicity as Hispanic and not Hispanic, so we can see that with the white line being Hispanic and the blue line being not Hispanic, that non-Hispanic individuals tend to get arrested more in this particular time period. And again, so just kind of like bringing these two slides together, looking at non-Hispanic males in particular. This is also the racial element of the arrest data. It's broken down into four different categories, you have white, black, American native, Native Alaskan, and Asian slash Pacific Islander, so those are particular four. There's very little data on American native, Native American, Alaska native population, as well as Asian, Asian and Pacific Islander. So, yeah, that became like a very insignificant portion, so I kind of focused all my attention on the white and black populations. The black population is outnumbering the white population in these data, in this, in these graphs, but I don't see a real big reason as to why to separate the two, so for all purposes of this project, I kind of put the two groups together, looking at them as a holistic approach and the best way to get the largest number of students or youth involved in these programs. This looks at just age in general over all five years, I figured it wouldn't make a big difference as to the breakdown over the time, so I just kind of put it into one big pie chart so we can see what age is actually the most arrested over these years, and it was kind of shocking to find that it was a thirteen or fourteen-year-old age range, which is basically the seventh and eighth graders. That is then followed by sixteen-year-olds at twenty-two percent, and then seventeen was at twenty-one percent. So basically, if you put all these graphs together, we're looking at non-Hispanic males thirteen or fourteen years of age that are white or a black race. And just kind of going over this again, get it all out there, there's an overall decrease in the years, after the year of 2012, and the arrest of youth over time, the target group is non-Hispanic males thirteen, fourteen years of age that are white or black race. And I didn't include this in the slides, but it's just kind of something interesting to note, is that the crimes that these kids were most arrested for were disorderly conduct, larceny not considered motor, and runaways, so, yeah. And then I have, you have a list of all the programs that I've created, although I created, but I've created inventory of. These are kind of like the top two, I thought, in my opinion. The first one is at the very top, the first one on the page, it is Visions by Viviana Nadowitski. She's going to start up a mentor program, which recruits kids who are interested in photography, either in a potentially professional, hopefully professional, aspect, or a, just, you know, kind of a hobby basis. She's, any sort of interest in photography she's looking for, so this is a great opportunity to get just, maybe even like an inkling of, like, to have an inkling of interest to get them involved in something like this. It's going to focus on kids eighteen and younger, which obviously hits our target group, and it's free to the public, that's always a bonus for any type of program we're trying to reach kids with, because they don't necessarily have the funds to themselves to pay for these types of programs. I believe she also will be providing cameras for them, so that's also another equipment that they do not have to purchase themselves. Her studio is also located in the Beloit's Fine Arts Incubator, which is pretty close to home, I guess you would say, depending where they live at. So, yeah, it's overall just a really good opportunity for students to get involved with photography. And then the second one is the Friends of the Riverfront Dancing at Harry's Place. It's just basically a series of dancing sessions that allows kids to learn different types of dance, ranging from like cha-cha to swing dance to waltz, I believe. And this one kind of has its own plus and minuses with its age range. It includes all ages, which, you know, teenagers may not want to be included with all age groups. This is also, it's also free, which is always a bonus, and it's located at Riverside Park, Harris Sea, Moore Pavilion, which, again, is close to home. Again, with the all-ages thing, it's kind of a plus and minus in that teenagers probably won't be, want to be around older individuals, no offense to anyone who considers themselves an older individual. But, yeah, beyond that, it's a really good opportunity for students to potentially get to know people that they don't necessarily interact with on a daily basis and see the world just slightly differently. These are kind of like the next two runner-ups, Kids from Androna, which is the fourth one down on the list I gave you. It's a theater group that teaches kids to sing, act and dance, focuses specifically on seven to eighteen, eighteen-year-olds, and it costs a hundred dollars per year, which obviously for financial reasons could be problematic, but they offer scholarships that allows people who can't afford this to still participate in these programs. And it costs a hundred dollars per year, which obviously, for financial reasons, could be problematic, but they offer scholarships that allows people who can't afford this to still participate in these programs. It's located at the Eclipse Center, which is really close to Community Action, so if anybody's involved with Community Action already, this would be a pretty good opportunity for them. And just in general, with the wide range of ages it has, particularly focusing on seven, eighteen-year-olds, it could lead to a mentorship program, which would cause thirteen to fourteen-year-olds to potentially take care of younger individuals and hopefully get them to be a little bit more responsible in terms of taking care of somebody else. The next one is the Wisconsin Regional Arts, Arts, Art Program. It's an art competition that focuses on anybody who's fourteen years and older. So it could be literally a fourteen-year-old all the way up to probably eighty, ninety, I don't know, whenever people get done drawing. So it's also, you know, another potential mentorship program, except that the kids can interact with somebody who's older than them and like, kind of like get under their wing and like see what type of potential that drawing could have for them in their future, which is a plus. But again, you know, with that older age range, they probably could feel intimidated or unwilling to participate. Another negative aspect of it is that it costs thirty dollars to submit your artwork. With this thirty dollars, you can submit up to three total different artworks, but again, with students who are younger, they might necessarily not have that fund to pay for this. This is also located in Madison, which is, tends to be problematic for kids who have school or who will be involved in other things like sports or athletics. But to kind of come back, that they allowed absentee submissions, so they can submit their work without having to be there at all. So that's also a plus. And the last one I kind of talked about, which is Doodles. The range of classes they have is very interesting. This is the fifth one I have on your list there. It's just basically a range of classes. Depending on what the class is, it has a different description for it. But basically, it offers kids to help develop their skills or develop the skills they already have, or develop a skill in drawing, painting, and I believe, animation. It focuses again on two to fourteen-year-olds, which hits our target group perfectly, but it does cost twenty-four to forty dollars, depending on the class, and it could last from three to four weeks, which can be kind of cost inefficient, depending on how invested you want these kids to be in these programs. And it's located also East Grand, so it's obviously pretty, well, I'm saying obviously, but it is pretty close to home. So that's also a plus. So again, just kind of like going back to Terry's earlier point about why involve the arts. From what I've heard, I wasn't there myself, but from what I heard, that people were really interested in getting kids involved in arts, and that's kind of exciting for me personally. Like, this is an opportunity for students to do something productive and expressive and potentially get the backing of an entire community that like, could support them and support their work. I feel like, once they start, this could be a really good opportunity to build up this community in a different way. It also allows a different outlet for kids to express themselves. I know, one of the kind of frustrating things I saw when I was analyzing the data was that a decent amount of kids were arrested for vandalism. I know, me specifically, I've been around a lot of graffiti and seeing those type of things, and it's frustrating, because if they had those type of art, those type of artistic skills, why not apply it to a canvas or to someplace where it's welcome? And so, for people like that, our, again, art programs would be great for them, and this could definitely be a great opportunity for kids. And then again, I know, me specifically, I was involved in sports basically all my life. So having a sense of belonging and a sense of a community with people is very important, I feel like. And then within that, once you get, develop a overall community of students who are involved in this program, these programs, they will, again, build this type of sense of community and belonging amongst each other. And that'll be great and enormous for their self-confidence and feelings of self-worth. So, yeah. There are some potential problems with this, and I had to kind of recognize that as I got later on in the semester. There's always really big questions about how do you get students involved? I know particularly with some of the groups I worked with back home, there are a lot of questions of how do you reach their youth in general? Like, nobody really knows how to explain our, like, I can guess I include myself in this, like, our adult-like ideas to these younger kids who haven't yet experienced what we've experienced. Also, there's always a question of money. Our expense, our, our supplies are very expensive, especially if you're talking about anything that requires mechanical equipment like photography, or any type of computer animation or anything like that, that's always, always, always a big issue. And then just in general, there's always going to be, or not always going to be, but there is stigma, a large amount of stigma, around the arts themselves in terms of who gets involved, especially for young males. I know, I talked with my father about this, he said that when he was growing up, arts were seen as something that was specifically for females, not necessarily something that men need to be involved in as it's emasculating. So there's always a question of how do we combat that stigma and at the same time increase the male involvement? So that's something we need to always be looking out for. And then like, my biggest question, I know, was what does getting more youth involved in the arts look like? I imagine that one or two more people involved is not exactly what we're looking for, so what, what number would be our successful involvement in the youth is what, something we need to be thinking about throughout this process as we go through the NARSA and implementing these types of community programs. Also, there is no, as of now, there is no means of success, no means of evaluating success. We don't know what it is that kids are supposed to learn once they go to these programs. I imagine, like, picking up one or two different techniques for drawing is not what we're looking for. So we need to definitely be thinking about what type of life skills or personal skills or just communication skills that they need to be learning while they're in these programs. And that's basically it. So, any questions?
I want to thank you, Dante, for a nice presentation and hard work, and Carol. And Mark, thank you for your help and support. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
And maybe you could live in Beloit and make a home here. It's happened before, right, Sheila? We like Beloit College students. Next, reports from boards and officers. Resolution authorizing the sale of 715 West Grand Avenue. Ms. Christensen.
In October of last year, we purchased 715 West Grand and 349 Euclid. At that time, our intention was to demolish 715 West Grand. At this point, we've determined that our funding source is the Neighborhood Stabilization Program funds. We have program income that is left from when we sold properties. But the city council delegated the authority, the implementation, the oversight to CDA, so we really need to transfer this property to the CDA, and the CDA is willing to pay a dollar. And then we will take this to CDA. If you approve it, we will take it to CDA on Wednesday, and they will consider the purchase and then the award of the bids for the demolition.
We make a motion at this time, then? Moved by DeForest. Seconded by Duncan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? It's passed. Next, resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources for mutual aid and fire suppression. Chief Leggett.
Good evening again.
Good evening.
The Fire Department has been a mutual aid partner with the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources for about thirteen years. We entered into this agreement with them in order to make ourselves eligible for forest fire protection grant money. As a mutual aid partner, we have some area in Rock County, over in the Footville area, that is DNR land. And if Footville Fire Department were to have a fire and they called upon us for mutual aid, we would respond through our mutual aid system to assist them. This allows us to have some reimbursement. It allows us to apply for grant funds for equipment and for training through the DNR. And this is just a renewal of a previous agreement.
Questions for Chief? Do we have a motion? Sheila, I'm sorry. Counselor DeForest.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure the public was aware that by extending this mutual aid service, one of the benefits is that we can apply for grants for the equipment that we could use in our own forest fire suppression. So for example, there was a fire at Big Hill Park, that we would have some equipment that would help us with that. So I just want to make sure the public is aware that this is a win-win situation for us.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I could add, I don't know, the fires we've had in the past, we've had some, when we've had big ones, we've had numerous departments pitch in, as we've helped them out to, so it's a, and South Beloit's included in that too, right, Chief?
In our mutual aid, our mutual aid box alarm system, yes. In this particular agreement, they don't have an agreement with the Department of Natural Resources. However, they could respond through the mutual aid box alarm system to this particular call. It wouldn't make them eligible for any of those grant funds.
Wouldn't affect the reimbursement?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a motion? Moved by Slanicker.
Second.
Seconded by Trishell. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is passed. Thank you, Chief. Next one, number three. Resolution authorizing the city manager to apply for forest fire protection grant program and to amend the 2016 general fund operating budget for expenditures under the program. Chief Leggett.
We are in the process of looking at a new grass fire skid. The skid is a unit that has a portable pump, a portable water tank, and attachments for us to be able to draft water and then pump water for a rural fire in a grass fire situation. The type of skid that we're looking for, it will fit in our pickup truck and/or our UTV that we purchased a few years ago. Just so happens, we could have used this device about a week ago. We had a fire along the Turtle Creek flood plain, which we weren't able to get any engines or our pickup truck into, so we ended up putting it out with brooms and stomping it with our feet, so, but we got it out. So this is going to help us make that happen. We have a grass fire skid right now in our pickup. It's about twenty-two years old, and it's seen better times, so it's time for a new pump. This replacement device will put it, be able to use it on both of those devices. So it's thirty-five-hundred-dollar match. The unit with all of its equipment included is a total of about $7,000, fifty percent funded by the DNR and fifty percent funded by our, funded by our operating budget.
Questions for Chief? Do we have a motion? Motion is made by DeForest, seconded by Duncan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief. And the, for resolution authorizing the city manager to apply for USDA farmer's market promotion program grant. Ms. Elamine.
Thank you. As you said earlier, we do have the second-largest farmer's market in the state of Wisconsin, so we're very proud of that. We are number one award-winning by Discover Wisconsin, so just to point that out, they do say we're number one based on popularity. Obviously, Madison gets more people, but we're okay with that. We would like to build the capacity of the market, and by doing so, we would like to make the market year-round. So there's a lot of excitement that, for my last four years being here, everybody in the community has told us, you know, why don't you make it year-round while the funds just aren't there? So this program with the USDA would actually give us that opportunity and the funding for that, and the funding would actually go for three years, which is very exciting. So we can maybe test the waters, not just one year, but actually three years, and make it, make a go of it and have the funding opportunity there. So this grant, based on our application, would be called Capacity Building, and that would actually be the intent, is to increase the businesses, the farm vendors' businesses, not just our capacity, but their sales. So right now, a lot of them may have a lot of their winter squashes and fall squashes that they actually could have the capacity to grow, but they have no place to sell them, so they don't grow them. This would actually allow them to extend their growing season and then have a place to sell those goods, but also the goods that they could can and then sell those year-round as well. And then, of course, there's some that are the honeys and the jellies and the jams that they could sell all year-round as well, so people could buy them twelve months out of the year. And then their grant actually doesn't say that it has to have a SNAP focus, which is the Wisconsin Food Stamp Program, but that's one of the focuses that we would be trying to solicit vendors to sell products that then can be bought with SNAP and the LINK Program, which is the Illinois Food Stamp Program, we take that as well. So we were looking at a way that we could extend those services. We've allowed SNAP at the farmer's market for the last three years and has grown for the last three years, but this would actually allow us to partner with different programs in the Rock County, one of which is WNEP, which is Counselor DeForest, has a program that actually would go and train people how to use SNAP at the farmer's market. So we'd be looking at that as well. And she is committed to offering three training sessions throughout the year, so that's really exciting. But working with other agencies, what else could they do? There's a lot of agencies that work with SNAP customers, so we would like to partner with them. And then we would also like to give giveaway items, so different things that you would entice people to come down to the farmer's market in the winter. So we would come up with different activities for children that would be free, entertainment opportunities, and then cooking demonstrations has been one of our priorities for the last few years, but I think that making it indoors would actually entice somebody to want to do the cooking demonstrations and make that available to everybody. And then do a recipe card promotion, that if they did produce something with the farmer's market products and they did a cooking demonstration, that organization, be it Blackhawk Tech or the Beloit Memorial High School Culinary Arts Group, would then have a recipe card to then spread the word about their organization as well. So lots of different community partnerships that we're planning on. We are planning on applying for the full $250,000, if you guys approve it today. And that would be, again, for three years. So we would have that opportunity to not charge the vendors to be inside during the farm market, and we have secured a location pending grant approval. We won't find out about the grant, though, until end of September, so we'll be doing a lot of the legwork all summer long, if you approve today to apply. And then get all those things in motion. That way, if we do get approved for the grant, this could actually start the first Saturday of November this year. So we're very excited, but we're also a little nervous. It's a lot going on in a short timeframe. And then this grant does not require a match, so it would have absolutely no budget impact on ourselves or the city of Beloit. Any questions?
I, I just have one. Thank you for reaching out and giving more opportunities for our low-income people to have good nutrition and good foods. I think fresh vegetables and fruits are what we all need more of, and many times, a lot of the lower-income peoples can't access these, and this is another chance, so it's a real win-win. So thank you again. If there are no questions, is there a motion? Moved by Slanicker.
Second.
Seconded by Trishell. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
Okay, Sheila, DeForest abstained because of your employment. Before we adjourn, just to hint, usually the newest council members make the motion to adjourn, and second, newest, not those who have been on before, so.
I'm having such a good time. I don't want to adjourn. What are you talking, I took, I took years to get in.
Maybe Regina.
I'm going to adjourn.
Is there a motion to adjourn? Regina makes the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Slanicker. We'll talk to Mr. Trishell later. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Thank you for coming, folks.